Thank you. We are back. House Education, January 22nd. Shifting gears. One of the things that will continue to come up as we discuss transformation in education is how we deal with tuitioning and where the money goes, what's allowed. And a lot of that has been shaken by a Supreme Court decision that we were going to get a briefing about. I'm going to come right over to our legislative council to provide an excellent.
Thank you. Beth and Jan's Office of Legislative Council. Would you like me to share my screen?
Yeah, let's do that.
So today, we're going to talk about a U.S. Supreme Court case called Carson v. Macon. It is most common they just refer to as Carson. And how that interplays with Vermont Town Tuition Program. And this is a presentation I have given for a couple of years now. I haven't really changed it at all, so but it usually sparks more questions than is a longer presentation than 45 minutes. So I'm going to just kind of move through everything. And if I am confusing you or you need some background, please tell me to slow down and we'll go into some of the concepts more depth. Does that sound okay?
Yes.
Okay, so what are we going to talk about today? So we're going to talk about the U.S. Constitution and the First Amendment. We're going to talk about three U.S. Supreme Court cases. We're going to talk about Vermont's Town Tuition Program, the Vermont Constitution, legal, recent legal challenges to the town tuition program. And I think recent because there have been legal challenges that date back many decades. And we're not going to talk about that today. And then just a very brief touch on where are we now? Okay. The U.S. Constitution. We're going to talk about the First Amendment today. What do you all think of when you think of the First Amendment? That's not what we're talking about. We're going to talk about the Freedom of Religion Clause. So actually, the first clause we're going to talk about is the Establishment Clause, which is Congress shall make no law respecting establishment of religion. And then the Free Exercise Clause, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. Together, that's what we think of when we think of the First Amendment and the Freedom of Religion Amendment. So Congress shall make no, it's kind of two clauses for one concept. Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion. That's kind of what we think about when we think about the separation of church and state. Or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. And then just a concept that we're going to talk about is strict scrutiny. So when a court looks at whether a law or an action is constitutional, they are reviewing that law and those actions against various different standards. And in order for a law or an action to be upheld, to be considered legal, it has to jump over certain hurdles depending on the rights that are being infringed. And the highest hurdle that a law or behavior has to jump over is strict scrutiny. And that is that the government action must be narrowly tailored to advance the compelling government interest. And so when we're talking about fundamental rights, which Freedom of Religion is a fundamental right, speech, we're going to, the courts are going to hold the government to the highest legal standard in order to determine whether a law or a behavior is constitutional.
Compelling government interest.
Here's a fun fact. In addition to you all making up the laws, courts make up laws, Congress makes up laws, right? This is, I am not a constitutional scholar. But generally speaking, and you'll see this in this presentation, the law is a living, breathing thing. And so what is a compelling government interest? There is no document that says these are all the compelling government interests. One side is going to be arguing that this is, we are in support of this action or behavior, and it is a compelling government interest. And one side is going to be arguing it is not a compelling government interest. And then it would be a court's job to decide. Now, when courts are looking at the facts before them and analyzing them under the law as it stands then, there is a concept called judicial precedence, right? So usually, courts are relying on the cases that have come before the case in front of them to inform their analysis. But just as you can't bind a future legislature, courts are not binding on future courts. And I think the most obvious example of this is the overturning of Roe v. Wade last year, right? You heard the concept that this was legal precedent, this is legal precedent, this is legal precedent, and then the court made, came out with a decision that was the opposite of what cases before it had held. So compelling government interest? So for comparison, so rational basis is the lowest hurdle that you have to jump over. And that, the court is going to be looking at whether the law or behavior is rationally related to a legitimate government interest. Now we're talking about compelling government interest. And there is lots of case law discussing that term. For our purposes today, I would encourage you to think of compelling government interest as kind of like the highest calling of the government's
Thank you.
job. But this is not black and white. This is an end. You will see this is an evolving area of the law. This is actually quite a living, breathing area of the law. Confused?
That helps.
Okay, so the first case we're going to start talking about, and again, anywhere you see underlined, there's a hot link there. So if you were to click on that, it should take you to the actual Supreme Court opinion. So Trinity Lutheran Church of Columbia versus Comer. Usually, this case is just referred to as Trinity Lutheran. And this is kind of the start of the analysis that Carson relies on. So the state of Missouri, so you can see that the decision was issued in 2017. Obviously, we know it takes a long time for something to happen in society and make its way all the way up to the U.S. Supreme Court. So case came out 2017, but all of the conduct that happened, happened before 2017. So that's just to orient you to where we are in time. So the state of Missouri funded a program offering grants to nonprofit organizations to resurface playgrounds. The state denied grants to religiously affiliated applicants, including Trinity Lutheran Church. The U.S. Supreme Court held that Missouri violated the free exercise rights of Trinity Lutheran Church when it denied the church a generally available public benefit solely because of its religious status. Questions? So if we're talking about the Freedom of Religion and we're talking about the two clauses, the Establishment Clause and the Free Exercise Clause, we're talking, the Supreme Court here is saying you can't deny this public benefit state to a religious organization just because they are religious, because they are, they have status as a religious organization. So seems a little bit more protective of the Free Exercise Clause than of the separation of church and state Establishment Clause.
This might be speculative, and I understand if you say I can't answer this. But it's reminding me of an issue that came up in our town in trying to give out ARPA money this year. And our church applied. And our reasoning for the churches that we need to give it to public facilities and not churches. So would that, I could be the same thing here?
Ooh, I have no idea. I'm not going to speculate, but but if you follow this, the presentation along, I would hope you have some questions. Okay, so the next case happened in 20, the opinion was issued in 2020. Espinoza versus the Montana Department of Revenue. We commonly refer to this as Espinoza. So Montana established a program that provided tax credits to people who donated money for private school scholarships. The scholarship program prohibited families from using the scholarship itself at private religious schools because Montana's state constitution contains a no aid provision, which prohibits government aid to any school controlled by a church. There is, I will just say, there is so much that goes into every single one of these cases that I am not going to touch on, including there is a lot to say about the various state constitutions and the clauses in them that talk about state aid and religious organizations. There's a long history there, and it's very different in every state. And for today's presentation, we are not going to get into it. That's a, that's a special caveat for the people that know what I'm talking about. I said it. Just like in Trinity Lutheran, which came out three years before it, the U.S. Supreme Court held here that because the scholarship program is a generally available public benefit, that phrase is really important, disqualifying otherwise eligible recipients based solely on their religious status or character violates the Free Exercise Clause of the First Amendment. So this is a direct quotation from this case. A state need not subsidize private education. But once a state decides to do so, it cannot disqualify some private schools solely because they are religious. Now, Montana made arguments that they were not actually disqualifying privately because of their status, but instead because the scholarship money would be used for religious purposes. The court declined to make a distinction between status and use-based discrimination in this case because it found the status-based discrimination to be so clear. It left open the question of whether there's a distinction between the two.
Can I ask another?
Yes.
So what about the religious schools that might discriminate and have, be in violation of states like discriminatory policies, like not accepting certain kids for certain reasons, or?
That is an excellent question. That is what I have been referring to as the Next Frontier, and that is not a part of this presentation, but it is the natural next presentation. So Supreme Court said, okay, we hear you. That's a clever argument, but your discrimination is so clearly based on status here. We're not going to comment on whether or not you can discriminate based on whether the money is going to be used for religious purposes. And then literally everyone, including this legislature, debated whether there's actually a distinction between use-based and status-based discrimination for two years. In my first session with the legislature was in 2022. And there was a bill that the Senate worked on that involved the town tuition program. And a lot of that debate was around whether there can be a status-based versus a use-based discrimination. And then that bill didn't go anywhere. In 2022, the Supreme Court decided to tell us how it is. So Carson v. Macon. So a little background here. Maine allows, so Maine has one of the, if not the only similar tuition program to Vermont in the country. Maine allows school districts that do not maintain a high school to pay tuition to the private school of the family's choice. Maine required, past tense, participating schools to be nonreligious. It actually said that in their law. Families that wanted to use state tuition dollars to send their children to religious schools sued. And Maine argued that it would not exclude a school from receiving tuition solely based on its religious status. Right? Supreme Court's already told us we can't do that. So we're going to say we are excluding them based on whether the money will be used for religious purposes. And the U.S. Supreme Court held that Maine's nonreligious requirement violates the Free Exercise Clause of the First Amendment prohibiting the bar of religious organizations from generally available public benefits based on the religious use of the benefit. So the Supreme Court is saying not only can you not deny a public, a generally available public benefit based on the religious status of the organization seeking that benefit, you cannot deny that public benefit based on the religious use of that benefit.
So is the language in our constitution pretty similar to the language in the Maine State Constitution?
Oh, that's a great question. I don't know. Hang on, hang tight. And I'm sorry, how much, I know you pushed me back, but I didn't check.
We pushed you now into 12 parallel of 50.
Okay. Okay, so what about the Establishment Clause? So far, we really only talked about free exercise, right? The government can't prohibit the free exercise of religion. But there's that other part of the First Amendment that talks about separation of church and state. What about that? So in 2002, the U.S. Supreme Court held that when government benefits flow to religious organizations through the independent choice of private citizens, there is no violation of the Establishment Clause. Because all three of the previous cases involved the First Amendment, which is a fundamental right, the court applied that highest, you had to get over the highest hurdle, the strict scrutiny in its analysis. And what the Supreme Court said is an interest in separating church and state more fiercely than the federal constitution cannot qualify as compelling in the face of the infringement of free exercise. So if the, if the U.S. Constitution and the U.S. Supreme Court, who is the deciding voice on what that constitution means, says that for every state, for all United States, this is the threshold to which you can separate church and state. If a state decides to go beyond that because they believe it's a compelling government interest, the U.S. Supreme Court is saying that cannot qualify as a compelling government interest if it's butting up against the infringement of the Free Exercise Clause. So if it's, if the state is saying our interests, our government action is so compelling that we believe separation of church and state is warranted here, if it infringes on someone's free exercise rights and it's going beyond what the U.S. Supreme Court has said is okay, the U.S. Supreme Court is never going to say that that's a compelling government interest. And the court found in all three of the previous cases that states were attempting to create a stricter separation of church and state than the federal constitution requires. So in those, so when the case, when the court decided Trinity Lutheran, Espinoza, and Carson, it looked at all of those states' constitutions and all of the facts in front of them, and it made decisions based on the facts in front of them. I'm highlighting this because the Supreme Court has not looked at Vermont's constitution. But it is tipping its hat a little bit, right? The analysis is going to be the same. The constitution, the language in the constitution is going to be different. The history of how that language came to be is going to be different. And the facts of the case and the plaintiffs and the defendants are all going to be different. But the analysis is likely to be the same, and that is an interest in separating church and state more fiercely than the federal constitution is not going to, is not going to cut it. So Vermont's Town Tuition Program, very similar to Maine's. So here, school districts are organized to provide education for specific grade ranges. And if the school district does not operate a school for summer, all of the grades it is organized to provide education for, it still has to provide education for its resident students. To do so, a school district may pay tuition to the school of a student's choice, either public schools or approved independent schools. We've already talked about this a little bit. It is family choice. There's also the concept of designation, but there's only one school district that does that here, so it's kind of a moot point for this discussion. But it is a legal option on the books right now. Unlike Maine, Vermont's statutory tuition program is silent towards religion. Tuitioning decisions are made at the individual school district level. So this is not the state deciding whether a kiddo gets to tuition to a school. It's an individual school board decision if there is a conflict. So if Vermont's statutory tuition program is silent towards religion and Maine's called it out, why do we care? Why are we here? Well, Vermont has what we call the compelled support clause in it in our state constitution. And it reads, "No person can be compelled to support any place of worship contrary to the dictates of conscience." And in 1999, we have a very seminal case, and this is where the conflict comes in Vermont. So in 19, this is again, this is a Vermont State Supreme Court case that was issued in 1999. And if you remember, the cases we were talking about from the U.S. Supreme Court started in 2017. So big time lapse there. So Chittenden School District did not maintain a high school, so it paid tuition for its high school students, including to religious private schools. At the time, it was the Department of Education. It was not the Agency of Education. So in response to this, the Department of Education terminated the state education aid to Chittenden. They got no money. And then the Chittenden School District turned around and sued the department. In analyzing Vermont's compelled support clause, the Vermont Supreme Court found there was no way to separate religious instruction from religious worship. The court was careful to note that the compelled support clause did not create a blanket ban on public funds being used in religious schools. Instead, the court found that a school district violates the compelled support clause when it reimburses tuition for a religious school in the absence of adequate safeguards against the use of such funds for religious worship. Are there any words in there that cause concern for you now that we've talked about First Amendment jurisprudence and Trinity Lutheran, Espinoza, and Carson? Anyone? You learned?
You.
Okay, thank you. In the almost 24 years since Chittenden was decided, no branch of government has developed standards for the adequate safeguard concept. But as of the date of this presentation, Chittenden remains good law. So we have the U.S. Supreme Court telling us that a state cannot create a stricter separation between church and state that the federal constitution requires. And we know that the federal constitution does not prohibit religious funds or public funds and a generally available public benefit from going to religious organizations for religious use. But we have the Vermont Constitution and our Supreme Court's interpretation of the Vermont's Constitution that says you cannot send Vermont funds to a religious school unless there are adequate safeguards to protect against the use of that public money for religious worship. They're in conflict with each other. But the way this works is it's, it's school boards are left having to make these decisions on their own, in their community, based on the legal advice that they received from their counsel, weighing First Amendment jurisprudence and our own compelled support clause jurisprudence without a court of ultimate jurisdiction deciding them and telling them what the final answer is here for Vermont. And I say this because in the realm of possibilities, right? The Supreme Court looked at Missouri, Montana, and Maine's constitutions, and they said, you are not so special that you can trump the First Amendment's the threshold of the First Amendment as far as separation of church and state. But no one has told Vermont that they are not so special yet.
Can I just ask for what would be some examples of adequate safeguards that would stop this?
I have nothing, nothing for you. I mean, that, that in the almost 24 years since Chittenden, no, a court did not come out with it. The executive branch did not come out with it, and the legislature did not legislate that. No one has. So I don't have an answer for that question. I'm saying all of this just to be super clear that in the universe of possibilities, is it possible that someone could challenge public money going to a religious school in Vermont and it make its way all the way up to the Supreme Court? And the Supreme Court looks at the unique history of Vermont and the unique, unique language of Vermont's constitution and the unique makeup of Vermont and says,
You're talking about the U.S. Supreme Court?
Yes. And says, we found the unicorn. We found the most unique, special place where your compelling government interest in creating the separation between church and state is actually okay. In the universe of possibilities, that exists until the Supreme Court says it doesn't. When we are looking at judicial precedent and what the U.S. Supreme Court has told us, is that likely? Is that something we're going to hang our hats on? I don't know. It is an open legal question. Until the U.S. Supreme Court says otherwise. Now, there's liability on both sides of the aisle here, right? And so if you are a school district having to make a real-world decision in the field about whether you're going to follow jurisprudence under Carson or Chittenden, your lawyer should hopefully be explaining all of this to you, but also the liability involved in making one decision over another, right? And so I have the benefit of my job is not to tell you how a court should rule, how a court will rule. I'm just helping you understand the legal landscape, and you all can make decisions. But you are likely to hear in the field, or I would not be surprised if you hear local councils saying, no, 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 you got to follow one or the other. There are so many reasons that go into legal advice based on the facts and the relationship of each of those situations that are different from my relationship with you all. But this presentation is meant to highlight, you've got the First Amendment in Carson, and you've got the compelled support clause in Chittenden. And right now, both of those cases are good law, and they conflict with each other. Clear as mud? Okay. So there has been some recent, both federal and state litigation. So everything on the left-hand side, the federal litigation has all settled. The French cases, and they're all French cases, which is the name of our former Secretary of Education. But AM, AH, EW, and Valente were all challenges in some respect that involved the town tuition program in a denial of funds to a religious school. The facts and the situations were different in each of these cases, and the arguments were different in each of these cases. were different in each of these cases. They've all settled, and whether a case settles or ends up with a court making a final decision can be very meaningful, because when parties settle, no one is usually ecstatic about the outcome. Everyone's negotiation, everyone's giving a little, and it's an agreement, a contract between the parties that the court ultimately has to okay. So depending on the terms of any settlement, it may or may not impact or have control over how the next case is going to be decided. But if a case goes, we call it on the merits, if it goes all the way, if there's litigation and there's a hearing and witnesses and evidence and a court makes that decision, usually that legal precedent is going to have kind of control over the next cases that come before it. Settlements can't. Most of the time, they don't, because what parties are looking to do is limit their liability and get out of there.
Are settlements secret? Like, are the settlement terms public, or does that say...
For these cases, yes. For these cases, yes. Every case is a little different, but generally speaking, yes. If the case is public, the terms of the settlement are going to be somewhat public. Not, not all the time and not all terms in every case. Nothing, nothing in my world is ever public. Then there was, so this was all on the federal side. And then there was state litigation on, the name of the case was Vitali, and that was a challenge to whether the town tuition program violates the common benefits clause, which is, we did not talk about here today, but that's basically that, you know, taxpayer money should not be going to just one population and one group, right? It should be benefiting all of a class. And so the argument here was, well, not every kiddo gets the option to tuition. And so it's a, it's a violation of the common benefits clause. And the Vermont Supreme Court found that the plaintiffs failed to allege facts to connect school choice with better educational opportunities. And they essentially did not state a claim upon which relief can be granted. But the court said, "Our conclusion in this case does not end the evolution of the debate over how the state should educate Vermont children." So where are we now? So as a result of the settlements in those cases on that left-hand column, the Agency of Education was required to issue some guidance to school districts. And they did so on September 13, 2022, and to my knowledge, this is still good, this is still the guidance that is out there. There's a hot link to the actual guidance on the agency's website, but here's a quote. "In light of the U.S. Supreme Court's decision in Carson B. Macon, we are writing to advise you of the following. School districts may not deny tuition payments to religious-approved independent schools or religious-independent schools that meet education-quality standards based on the Vermont Constitution's compelled support clause. But school districts are tasked with making those tuitioning decisions on an individual basis, taking both the Carson and Chittenden decisions into consideration."
This may be too far in the weeds, but this is interesting. It says, "May not deny tuition payments to religious-approved independent schools or religious-independent schools that meet educational quality standards," yet that's not a requirement to be an approved independent school.
No, but there is a whole category, and there's separate tuitioning provisions for an independent school that does meet education-quality standards. There's some differences in how tuition is calculated, and they would qualify to participate in the former school construction program, and so there's some different benefits available to them. It's not a requirement to be an approved independent school, no.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, so to my knowledge, no religious school that is an approved independent school meets education-quality standards has chosen to go that path?
That would be a question for the field. I'm not aware of any schools that have actually meet education-quality standards.
There is one, two.
I think they're in process, but I don't know whether they've been deemed to meet that status.
Well, my question is, speaking of, if you're not meeting EQS, can payment be denied based on the language here?
I don't think this has anything to do with whether or not an independent school is meeting EQS.
Well, it says you may not deny tuition to a school that meets EQS. So therefore, does that mean that you can deny tuition to a school that does not meet
This is saying you can't deny tuition to a religiously affiliated independent school.
That meets education qualities.
Right. So I, I think, I didn't write this. I think, I think these, I think what is meant here is that there's two different categories. There's approved independent schools, and then there's independent schools that meet education-quality standards. And if they are religiously affiliated, you cannot deny tuition to either of those categories of independent schools if they are religiously affiliated, based on their religious affiliation. There may be other reasons why you're denying, right? Because maybe they don't meet...
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I read it, yes.
Okay.
Here's an order that...
Yes.
Just everything, thank you.
There's, um, there's so much more to talk about here. This is, this is meant to be foundational and to give you a working knowledge if this comes up, to have something to reference to or to run to my office and say, "I know we need to talk about this."
So I might, do you feel comfortable talking about where things stand in the independent school approval process and the requirements and sort of the legal limbo there?
A little bit, so yes. So the, so in order to be, so 16 BSA 820, Section 828 defines which schools or which educational programs are eligible to receive public funds. And included in there, that's how we get that, you hear everyone talking about, recognized independent schools are not eligible for tuition. We know that because they are not listed in Section 828, only approved independent schools, and a whole host of other educational programs that we're not going to talk about. So approved independent schools are regulated essentially by the State Board of Education. There is, Section 166 in Title 16 is the approved independent school and recognized independent school statute. It talks about the process and some requirements to be an approved independent school. But the main regulation standards come through the rulemaking process, and the State Board of Education owns those rules. The legislature has given pretty broad authority to the State Board of Education to promulgate rules for the approval of independent schools. That's it. There's some, some other, there's some other framework, but it's pretty broad. And so the State Board of Education, right around when Carson came out, went through a large rule change with their approved independent school rules. And included in that was a requirement, and then there was another amendment of the same rule series last year, I believe, that carried over this requirement that in order to be an approved independent school, you had to essentially follow the state's anti-discrimination laws. And there was a requirement created for an attestation when you are, so approved independent school approval is good for, generally speaking, five years. The State Board can change that, but it's generally five years. And then you would go through a renewal process. And as long as you're in your five-year window, you're just out there operating as an approved independent school. When you come up for renewal, now there, I believe, an attestation process where you have to confirm that you are meeting certain standards that are not perhaps independently verifiable, such as you have fire alarms and, you know, safety things. And so one of the pieces on that attestation is following anti-discrimination laws. There were some schools that were up for renewal and kind of put a little asterisk on their attestation, and that caveat varied from school to school. They were religiously affiliated. And the general argument is, and I'm not speaking on behalf of those schools, I'm just speaking on behalf of the general argument in this area is, following anti-discrimination laws, strict compliance with anti-discrimination laws may cause a religiously affiliated organization to violate their closely-held religious tests. And that is a violation of the free exercise clause of the U.S. So there are some cases, and so there have been some lawsuits against the state for this requirement. And there are some lawsuits that are winding their way through the federal court system. I believe they have gone from, there was a request for, I think there's two cases, I think. But litigation is incredibly long and drawn out. What often happens when a benefit is being denied is someone files a complaint to kick-start the process. Here are the facts of the case and here are the laws that we think have been violated. And then there's a whole host of due process requirements and procedural requirements that kick in related to the defendant's filing an answer, the discovery process, yada, yada, yada. That takes forever. Meanwhile, the person who's filing that complaint is still being denied that benefit that they believe they will triumph and be due. So how do you kind of fix that? There's this process called an injunction. They can request an injunction, whether it's temporary, either stop or grant of a benefit while the litigation continues and we figure out the ultimate outcome. So there was a request for injunction in this case, saying, "We don't think we should have to comply with the discrimination, anti-discrimination laws, or we think complying with the anti-discrimination laws is a violation of our First Amendment rights. While courts, you figure it out, we would like to still be eligible for public tuition." I believe that that injunction was denied. So the court found in favor of Vermont in requiring compliance with the anti-discrimination laws. And the result of that, the injunction, the denial of the injunction has been appealed, I believe, to the Second Circuit where it is being briefed and litigated, and I haven't looked it up recently. So it's possible that there's an opinion out there, and I have not seen it. But what this is all getting to, and there's, there's actually the exact same thing happening in Maine right now. So Maine, after Carson, they, they have, they have a education, like an anti-discrimination law in their education statutes that's specific to educational environments, and they have a similar requirement in there that came out after Carson. There's a whole separate, the analysis is going to be a little different based on the context, but there's also cases winding their way through Maine and the First Circuit for Maine's Town Tuition Program requiring religiously affiliated schools to comply with the anti-discrimination laws. So the federal court system is broken up into nine different circuits, and Vermont is in the Second Circuit and Maine is in the First Circuit. So not only are they dueling states, there's going to be dueling federal opinions. They could be the same. They could also be separate. So what this is all based around is there is this case called Smith, came out of Oregon, and I'm going to get the year wrong. It was either the late 90s or the early 2000s, and it stands for this principle that if a law is generally applicable and neutral, so it applies to everyone equally, it's not calling out one class or one group over another, then it can infringe on fundamental rights because society has to function, right? If there was a carve-out for every law, for every protected class or right, it would be very hard for society to function. So there's this general legal principle that if a law is generally applicable or neutral, it can infringe on a fundamental right. So if a law applies to everyone, such as you have to follow the anti-discrimination laws, and it's neutral, it doesn't say, "Including you, you religious schools," perhaps, under that legal, under the Smith theory, it might be okay for Vermont and Maine to require those schools to follow the anti-discrimination laws because the law is generally applicable and neutral. Now, what generally applicable and neutral means is the next frontier, and that is what is being debated. And this is an area of the law that is ripe for change. And I say that because there was a U.S. Supreme Court case in 2021 or '22 out of Philadelphia where there was a challenge based on a law to a religious organization and whether that law was generally applicable or neutral. There was a little bit of a get out of jail free card there, but there was some dicta and at least three different Supreme Court justices' concurring opinions that they don't think Smith should be the controlling law anymore. So they've tipped their hat that this is something they're going to continue to talk about. So all of this to say, this is very much an unsettled area of the law and has the potential to create huge precedent nationally for this concept of generally applicable and neutral laws and how they are applied, in this case, to religious organizations. And that's, again, a whole separate presentation with so much more to it. But so right now, I believe, the underlying case of ultimately whether Vermont can require a religiously affiliated independent school to have to comply with the anti-discrimination laws in order to be eligible to receive tuitioning is still being litigated, and the injunction piece, which involves an analysis of where the court thinks this analysis is going, is being litigated in the Second Circuit. And I think it's likely that either Vermont's case or Maine's case is going to go up to the Supreme Court.
So we'll wrap there, but that is just to say that, you know, a whole sort of thing that we've all had to learn is that what we do, we have to think of it in the terms of, will it be appealed? What is the likelihood that it would reach the Supreme Court? And what is the potential Supreme Court decision on it? So it's all a bit of a difficult path to go. Great. And we'd love to get perhaps some more clarification on the State Board. That's our round of testimony. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll reset the livestream for the gentleman right here. Would you pull up another chair?
I'm doing it.
Jennifer and Tammy, could you be free to have a sweet up on the wood?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think I'll sort of have this on shelf, and I like that.
You think you want it?
I would, I would take the mic.
See, if you want to be here, you'd be curious.
Right?
You want to record?
Sure.
They could back.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that was a funny question.
Okay.
Do you have money?
Stay in the game.
We'll let Michael sort that out.
By the way.
I had a feeling I had to overwatch you today, but...
I have a feeling that may happen a lot.
Squeeze every evening before the...
Yep.
We'll let Michael sort that out.
I had a feeling I had to overboard you today.
I have a rule that may happen a lot.
Squeeze everything before the. Yep.
I think he taught all three schools.
I missed the one.
Welcome back to House Education, Wednesday, January 22nd, 2025. We're gonna now get a look at the work of the State Board of Education, sort of what they're up to, but also what their role is in the world of education, especially as we move forward on debating some of the big proposals coming from the administration. And if there were some follow up questions from some of our previous presentations, perhaps we can ask some of them. And hopefully, we will also talk a fair bit about education quality standards, the role of the State Board of those, sort of what they mean and how they are shaped or able to. Floor is yours. If you would introduce yourselves and open with your presentation.
All right. Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. I'm Jennifer Jack Samuelson. I'm the Chair of the Vermont State Board of Education, joined also by Dr. Tammy Colby.
I'm Tammy. For the record, I'm Tammy Colby, Vice Chair in the State Board of Education.
So thank you for having us here this morning. We've been asked to provide sort of two different buckets of review for you guys. The first is just a general overview on the State Board of Education. So I have a slideshow, which I believe you all have, which I can walk through with you. And then more specifically, we'll drill down on the education quality standards, which Tammy was one of our co chairs on that Rule Update Committee. So she has a presentation that she can walk through. And if you all have questions, you know, we can answer that. So this is, I think, the third year that I've sort of done this overview to the State Board of Ed. And every year I kind of fine tune it and add in a little more detail. So hopefully this will give you a good sense of what we're doing. So our membership is set by 16 VSA Section 161. We have 11 total State Board members, which is comprised of eight non student members with priority given to the selection of persons with a demonstrated commitment to ensuring, to ensuring quality education for Vermont students. Board members typically serve a term of six years beginning in March 1st, unless board members step into some other position and then they could, you know, then take six years on top of that. We have two student members who each serve a two year term. They are non voting the first year and then voting the second year. So have full board member rights as a student. And actually, the students that we've had have been very engaged and, you know, really contribute to the conversations and the things that we're considering. And then finally, the Secretary of Education is a non voting member of the board. All members are appointed by the governor with the advice and consent of the Senate. And then you have a slide that lists out all 11 board members. And I've sort of broke it down so that you can see where board members are from, as well as the experience or interests that they bring to the board. And I think the important thing to note there is we are pretty geographically diverse. We've got good representation of teachers, former teachers, heads of school, principals, school board members, professors, CTE heads. So we've got pretty good diversity there. Then I just want to pause because there was a pretty seismic shift in the relationship with the State Board of Ed and the Agency of Ed in 2012. So prior to 2012, we were more like a traditional board. We oversaw the Commissioner of Education. We selected the Commissioner of Education. We directed the work of the Department of Education. And we directed policy and technical direction of the department, including rulemaking and developing regulations. We also supervised the Commissioner. But in 2012, with Act 98, that all changed. And so the Commissioner was elevated to a secretary position that reports directly to the governor. It established the Agency of Education. And the State Board is no longer responsible for overseeing agency policies, programs, or resources. We still do retain oversight with respect to the rulemaking process. But the Agency is responsible for implementing the rules and regulations adopted by the board. So we've worked really hard to have good communication with the Agency as we are engaged in rulemaking so that we make sure that the rules that we are proposing are actually implementable from the Agency's perspective. And it just points to that importance of being good communication with the Agency. But I think the other thing to take away here is that we do not direct the Secretary. We don't direct the Agency. The Agency reports directly to the governor. And the governor actually is the one now who selects the Secretary. So the State Board last year was responsible for conducting the Secretary search. And by statute, we proposed three candidates to the governor for his ultimate selection. So the way the board is now, we do sit in a rather unique position. We are independent. We are a public forum, so all of our meetings are worn and open to the public. We have public comment at the beginning and the end of every full board meeting and at least at the beginning of every committee meeting. We really do encourage and welcome input from the public with the work that we're doing. We're a neutral body, so we act consistent with legislative intent and we advise the General Assembly when we are invited to do so. We also serve a quasi judicial role in some circumstances. This was more relevant a couple of years ago. So there were rate appeals by therapeutic schools or tuition appeals. We are charged in statute with sitting in that quasi judicial capacity. That hasn't come up for a couple of years, but it's, you know, still a possibility. We also are in charge pursuant to 16 VSA Section 261 with the organization and adjustment of supervisory unions and supervisory districts. And of course, we've retained the authority to engage in rulemaking pursuant to 16 VSA Section 164.7. So how do we determine our work? Basically, there are three ways that the board can receive work. One is if something is listed in statute. So for example, 16 VSA Section 164 lists out 21 responsibilities of the State Board of Education. 16 VSA Section 165 is the statute that authorizes the education quality standards, which the board just did a pretty massive rewrite of last year. We also get our responsibilities through legislative acts. So for instance, Act 46, the board was in charge of determining the mergers of different school districts. And also Act 173 spawned a series of rulemaking by the board in order to comply with what was set forth in the act. And then, of course, we have our rules. And our rules, we are able, since there are rules, to open them at any time. But I'll circle back on that. As far as executing our work, by statute, we shall be supported by adequate staff who report to the board as a practical matter. We have no staff. We are deeply grateful to the Agency of Education, Maureen Davis and Suzanne Sprague. From the Agency assist the board with warning our meetings, taking our minutes, you know, really doing all of that background work to facilitate our meetings. But beyond that, we don't really have any support. So it would be nice if we had more support because it does leave a lot of gaps in the work that we're trying to get done. Typically, we meet monthly, so we meet typically on the third Wednesday of every month. We try, you know, since COVID, we're doing a combination of in person meetings and hybrid meetings because we found that hybrid meetings are actually easier for the public to attend. So there is value in that, but there's also value in being in person and seeing schools. So there's no magic to that, but we typically try to meet in person about four times a year, maybe more. And we often try to honor board members who are going off, whether student members or adult members, by going to visit their school, which has allowed the board to see a lot of different schools throughout the state. We also hold special meetings as required for the performance of our duties. And we typically hold, you know, three or four, maybe five of those a year, depending on the need. And then during Oliver Olson's tenure as the Chair of the Board, he established a committee structure, which we found is really, really helpful because it allows us to, you know, farm out the work so that instead of having the whole board engage in rulemaking, we have different committees set up to look at that. And then, you know, the committee comes back to the full board for a discussion and vote on it. So we found that to be a pretty efficient way to get things done. For organization, by statute, we select a chair by any only. We also select a vice chair at that time. And then I just went through the committee structure. So the next slide reviews the different committees that we have. And in 2024, we had 11 monthly meetings. We took the month of July off. We had three special meetings and we had 27 committee meetings. And so you can see for each of those committees, how many meetings each committee had, as well as who serves on those committees. And the first one shows each USSPS. I was running out of space. So that was the Education Quality Standards Committee that oversaw the updates to Rule Series 2000, which Tammy will be talking about momentarily. Once that work was done, the committee's work was discharged. But we took the same group of people and renamed it the Student Performance Standards Committee because pursuant to 16 VSA 164.9, the State Board is also in charge of overseeing student performance standards and making sure that they dovetail with the education quality standards. So historically, that's been things like Common Core. We just updated the health and physical education standards. And the committee is currently now looking at student performance standards that have been proposed by the Act 1 Working Group with regard to ethnic study standards. So in 2024, this is just a brief overview of the work that we did. We concluded our updates to Rule Series 2000. So these establish the standards to ensure that all Vermont students are afforded educational opportunities that are substantially equal in quality and are equitable, anti racist, culturally responsive, anti discriminatory, and inclusive. And those rules will go into effect July 1st of this year. We also reopened for the second time in a couple of years, Rule Series 2200, which govern independent school approvals. And we performed work in a few different areas. Primarily, we applied the principles and goals of Act 1 to independent schools and adopted the same substantive language as that that was used in Rule Series 2000. We also introduced a requirement that independent schools must complete and submit annual assurances of their compliance with the rules. And I did catch the tail end of Beth St. James. So as she mentioned, you know, if a school is approved, the timeframe ranges, but on average, you know, call it five years. What this requirement does is it says during that intervening time period, every year, the school has to submit an assurance. So that it just allows more of a checkpoint between the school and the Agency and the board. So I do know that those assurances were sent out by the Agency, I believe, last week. And we should, I expect the Agency will be getting the assurances back. The updates to Rule Series 2200 also provided a comprehensive framework of the requirements that accrediting agencies must meet in order to be recognized by the board. So there are accrediting agencies such as NEAS and AZ that accredit schools. And it used to be, there was Rule 7320 that listed those agencies by name. And what the board found is that the list was really outdated. And of course, to engage in rulemaking is at least an eight month process. We decided what was probably a better way to go about it, instead of listing by name, is to create a framework. So that's now embedded in Rule Series 2200. And then we have a list on our website that lists the accrediting agencies. So it just, it's, I think, a better way to set up that framework, but it also allows us to be more nimble in terms of putting organizations on the list or off the list. We also require a method by which the Agency will evaluate whether a school is compliant with our non discrimination requirements. And we clarify the process by which accredited and non accredited schools may apply for and receive approval or reapproval. And just as a reminder, there are no approvals at this point because there's a moratorium on approval of any new independent school. So we're just, at this point, looking at reapprovals. So those rules went into effect July 1st of last year, with the exception of instructional strategies and curriculum content, which will go into effect July 1st of this year. And then the third, you know, major bucket of work that the board completed last year was we approved two post secondary schools. And again, we went through the process and there are three accrediting agencies that have now been recognized by the board. So current issues facing the State Board of Ed. One, insufficient resources to meet workflow demands. So in FY '24, our total budget for, you know, all board members, travel, advertising, recording costs, total budget was $70,708. And we've been level funded since FY '21. Prior to that, it was significantly more. So it got cut pretty significantly in 2021. It has not been increased since then. Board members earn $6.25 an hour or $50 a meeting. You can imagine that's not very much money. And of course, we have no dedicated legal support. And I guess the important thing here is that if we just kind of continue, you know, backburnering our work, we have enough money to make it through this fiscal year and going forward. If we want to do any substantive work, such as rulemaking or, you know, continuing with looking at the performance standards that have been given to us by the Act 1 Working Group, we would like to hire a consultant. We don't have any money in our budget to do that. So we're a little bit stuck at the moment where we have work that we can identify needs to be done that we would like to do. But I think we have about $35,000 left in our budget to make it through the rest of the fiscal year. So without additional money, we can't really get the work done that we would like to get done. So we don't have funds to hire a consultant. We don't have funds to hire an attorney to assist us with updates to our rules, including the career and technical education rules, which really are the final step. You know, we updated the education quality standards. We updated the independent school approval rules. This is sort of the last leg of that tripod. We don't have funds to hire an attorney to help us do that. So and we don't have funds to fully discharge our statutory obligations. So requests that we might make of the Legislative, the General Assembly is we feel it would be really beneficial to the board to have dedicated legal counsel. Currently, if we need an attorney, we have to put a contract out to bid. We have to go through that process. From the time we articulate a need for legal services until the time we actually have someone who's able to help us is about three months, which leaves us stranded. And that attorney is only able to assist us for work that falls within the scope of that contract. So if we have another question that comes up, we don't have an attorney. And we thought it would be really helpful to have an attorney on retainer. We estimate that cost would be about $36,000 a year. So that when questions come up, it's literally, we can pick up the phone, send an email, and be able to have that level of support. We would also love to see increased compensation for board members. I say this, I'm not sure it's going to happen in my tenure on the board, but I do point out that this is good work that we're doing. And we think it's important to have differences of perspectives and life experiences. It is hard to be able to be fully engaged with this work on the modest stipend that board members get. So I just point that out because I think it would be really important to be able to make this something that would be, that would enable more people to engage in this kind of work because I think there's real interest out there. We would love to have a one time line adjustment to our current FY '25 budget to allow us to spend up to $40,000 for a consultant to assist us in reviewing the proposed ethnic social, I'm sorry, ethnic study standards that have been proposed by the Act 1 Working Group. And we would also request $25,000 to retain legal counsel to assist with updates to our Rule Series 2370, which are the career and tech rules. So that would be in addition to the having counsel on retainer. And then looking to FY '26 and beyond, we would love to have additional funding that would allow us to update our rules. Many of our rules have not been updated in almost 30 years. Anytime you look at a State Board rule that references the Commissioner, you know it's at least 13 years old. Those rules are in desperate need of being updated. But again, we don't have the funds or the support that would allow us to do that. And of course, we would like additional funding to meet the other obligations that have been set forth in statute. And that really raises a larger question. You know, I realize that the educational landscape is sort of shifting on almost every front, and the State Board is a part of that. And so I think to you, I would ask, you know, what do you see is the State Board's role going forward? And what can we do to assist that conversation? Thank you.
I would say that that is a question that we assigned to the Commission on the Future of Public Education in Vermont. And I'm not sure we necessarily want to get ahead of that, but a valuable question. Just very quickly, what I am interpreting here is actually a budget adjustment act. For $65,000, 40 for somebody to help with the Act 1 review, and 25 to help with new CTE rules. CTE rules or updated CTE rules.
And just to clarify that, yes, you are correct. And to that, I would add, if we were to have a counsel on retainer, estimated at $36,000 a year, I think the fair response would be to tack on $18,000 in this fiscal year for, you know, half of that annual amount, and then, you know, roll it to future years going forward. And then the $25,000 for CTE, the attorney that we had assisting us with the updates to EQS and 2200, it was about, you know, $50,000, $55,000 to update each rule series. So we could fairly estimate it would cost about $50,000 for CTE. But again, we're halfway through the fiscal year, so $25,000 this year, $25,000 next year to finish the work.
And what additional for increased compensation for board members? Ballpark, let's throw it in.
I mean, I'm not trying to hedge on that one. I'm not sure, I mean, I feel like other boards, other state boards, are either getting the same amount that we're getting, or I know that there are other boards where members are getting, you know, five and six figures a year for the work that we're doing. I would say this is not a full-time job. Sometimes feels like a full-time job. But I think we spend a lot of time working on these issues, and, you know, late nights, weekends, holidays. It's, you know, I have a job in my real life, and I often find that this work comes first because I'm constrained by statutory deadlines. So then that ends up, you know, shifting the other work that I thought I was going to be doing to later in the day, because this work needs to happen first. I don't have an answer for you, honestly. I would love to say something that is on par with other boards that are doing similar work, and I just, I don't have that information. So I feel like I can raise the issue, and it's not compelling if I don't have a number. I mean, I could make up a number, but I would rather have a real number.
I actually think that board compensation variables is something we can put our hands on pretty quickly from the Joint Fiscal Office, depending on how different they are.
But thank you.
Sorry, I don't think you recognize me, and I just asked my question.
That's okay. So that's it for part one?
Yes, unless you have other questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Obviously, for the topic of the State Board and all of that, I assume will become part of the bigger debate that we're going to have, depending on what the government proposes.
I'll have your presentation up.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. We're going to shift here to the education quality standards. As Chair Samuelson mentioned, this was a significant body of work over the past few years for the State Board of Education. And just to sort of put this work in context, the education quality standards establish the standards for public schools that all public schools need to meet to ensure that Vermont students have educate equal, substantially equal educational opportunities. So if you think about it, the EQS are those core rules and regulations that talk to schools and districts around the state about how they do their work on a day-to-day basis. And it's the regulatory framework that is intended to ensure that we have substantially equal educational opportunities across all public schools. There's a separate set of rules that apply to independent schools. So I'm going to be talking about the EQS, which applies to public schools with a few exceptions of independent schools that opt in to the EQS. And there's a handful of schools. I just mention that because that came up in that exchange you just had, Representative Collins. So there are a handful of independent schools that opt into the EQS, but the majority of our independent schools fall under our independent school rules. But it means that this canon of rules is really important, right? Like, this is what school principals and school boards lean back on and use to guide their work. It talks to them about curriculum requirements, it talks to them about staffing, it talks to them about the kinds of reporting that they have to do. And so this set of rules was last updated in 2014. So it's been quite some time since we updated them, and it's important that the EQS reflect what's currently in statute, right? And so the impetus for updating the rules this time around were the changes in statute that came with Act One of 2019. And out of Act One was, created the Act One Committee Working Group, and they were charged with providing recommendations back to the State Board for how the EQS needed to be modified to comply with Act One. And so that was our starting point for this work. And the changes as a result of Act One, right? What did Act One in and of itself ask of us? Act One requires the education quality standards to be established in a way that would increase cultural competency of students in grades PK 12, increase the attention to the history contribution perspectives at ethnic and social groups, promote critical thinking regarding the history contributions and perspectives of ethnic and social groups, commit supervised reunions to eradicate racial bias in their curricula, provide across their curricula content and methods that enable students to safely explore questions of identity, race equality, and racism. And six, ensure that the basic curriculum and extracurricular programs of all supervised reunions are welcoming to all students and account for parental concerns about religion or culture. So that was the starting point. That's what Act One put on the table and said that the EQS now needed to attend to. So when those recommendations came to the state board, we said, well, we're opening up these rules, these rules haven't been updated since 2014, we also need to take into account the broader set of considerations, again, policy changes, input on implementability of the rules as they have been, right? And other kinds of concerns raised by the legislature and constituents across the state. So the SB approved further modifications to the revisions proposed by the Act One Working Group to ensure that the EQS was consistent with current statute. Whether or not, we took into account the extent to which the EQS was understandable and able to be implemented in the field, that included both the recommendations that came from the Act One Working Group, as well as provisions that were in the EQS already, where the field was struggling and potentially needed clarification. Technical changes recommended by the Agency of Education and the field to bring the document current with policy and practice, a lot has changed since 2014 in education. Four, to bring the EQS in alignment with the newly proposed district quality standards. And the district quality standards, just to remind us all, those were put into, were part of Act 127, and the Agency of Education was asked to create those rules and regulations. That's the only set of rules currently that the agency has oversight over, and are not under the State Board. And so we have two sets of rules, one by the agency, that's the district quality standards, and we have the education quality standards. And we needed to make sure that these two things work together, right? Because if they aren't working together, that creates a lot of friction and challenges for our practitioners in the field. And then, as I'll show you in a moment, we took a lot of input from the field and the public about the rules' impact on educational programs and practices. And again, with an eye toward implementability and consistency with statute. So we had both the Act One body of work that came to us, and then we had all of these other things that we considered. So what you can see on this slide is the process. It was a two-year process. This is a much longer process than usual, I want to acknowledge that, and I know that's been a sort of comment that has sort of come back to the State Board, that this took a long time. Let me talk about why that is. It took, it took two years because, one, this is probably the most impactful set of regulations that we have for public schools in Vermont, and we need to get them right. And the kinds of recommendations that were coming in from the Act One Working Group are extremely important, but they're new, right? These are, this is new terrain, not just in Vermont, but nationally, and we need to be very thoughtful about that. And we are very thankful to the Act One Working Group for their recommendations and partnerships in this work. We also had a rule series that hadn't been updated in a long time, and there was a lot of things to be covered there. And so, starting in April 2022, we received the recommendations of the Act One Working Group. And between April 2022 and May 2023, the EQS Committee met 28 times. And in each one of those meetings, we took, we had individuals or groups come testify before us. Some of those meetings were working meetings, but we always had public comment at the beginning and the end. And out of that, we took a hard look at the definitions, sort of around curriculum instruction, technical changes, application to independent schools, alignment with district quality standards, and we had a legal review. Out of that, then, we made recommendations back to the board, and the board in 2023, the spring of 2023, voted unanimously to approve the rule for ICAR filing. It was filed by ICAR into ICAR. So all that work happened before we actually started the formal rulemaking process. And I think that's also really important, because oftentimes, those of you who know me will hear me say, State Board's the public in the public education, right? That entire process, over that entire years, was about public engagement, right? And really thinking and taking that work, taking those comments and taking that feedback in. So that when we started the ICAR, when we started the formal rulemaking process with ICAR, we were already in a position where we had done substantial work in engagement with the public around this set of rules. After ICAR, we had three public hearings with 180 attendees in total, and we took in over 100 written comments. From that, we had another series of 14 meetings where we processed all the comments, made additional updates to the rule, including two meetings where we met with our companion committee that was working on the 2200 series, because one of the things the State Board decided is that we wanted to make sure, to the extent possible, that the same educational quality standards that we put in place in public schools were also there on our independent school rules. Under current statute, we are not able to have, one, unified set of rules for both public and independent schools, but to the extent possible, we wanted to make sure that the same equal educational opportunities that are available to students in public schools were there for students in independent schools. The State Board unanimously approved the rule in April 2024, and LCAR unanimously approved the rule in June 2024. The rule goes into effect July 1st, 2025. So it took a little bit of time. But what I will say is that rule now is the foundation, it's the starting point in many ways for what we'll do with the CTE rules. It was the foundation for how the 2200 rules were updated, right? And so getting that right is really important. And now we're able to, because we've done that work, to be able to update these other rule series. And I think we've created a framework now that will allow the State Board to more easily update that rule for changes in statute going forward. I want to just acknowledge, it was a lot of meetings, a lot of work. And I just want to acknowledge the people on this committee who did this work. It was co-chairman Kim Gleason, who I know some of you know, former school board chair at Essex, Mohamed Diop, who's an educator at Newske, Greg Farron, who's one of our student members from Virgins, Rich Warner from East Dover. And we had, the committee went on for a while, so we had some former members, Patrick Brabham Burlington, Tom Lovett from St. Johnsbury, and Gabrielle Lucci, who is also a student member. So Chair Samuelson mentioned, we're not exactly done with this, the EQS is done, but one of the things that the State Board, that State Board is required to do in addition to rulemaking is we also have to consider and approve the standards in the state, right? And to what, and those are in two, our authority for that are in two different sections of statute. The standards are things like Common Core, National Next Generation Science standards, the Health and Peace standards. So we just created this EQS that includes sort of this framework for thinking about social equity, right? Well, we have no standards for that. And so we need standards, and standards being those things that we measure the extent to which students can know or can do something. In Vermont, we don't, we, the State Board or the agency, don't prescribe curriculum, but we prescribe standards to which, right, all students should aspire. And so we don't have social equity standards right now. The Act One Working Group provided to us an initial framework called the IRIS framework, Vermont State Ethnic Studies Framework. That framework has recommendations for standards, as well as other kinds of recommendations around curriculum and instruction. Currently, in June of 2023, they provided that to us. It was a little difficult for us to start evaluating and considering that, because we hadn't finished the EQS, right? We need to make sure these things line up. So immediately following when the EQS was approved in June, we started the process of considering those recommended standards, and we began that process in the fall. And we are currently in this, in our standards committee, working through that process now. It's going to be really important that we sort out those standards prior to July 1st, because that's when the EQS has got into effect. So the work is still continuing. We've moved on to the standards now. And in your handouts, in case you need it handy, we, it's a link to the final adopted rule 2000, and also a link to the IRIS framework that was shared with us from the Act One Working Group. Happy to take questions.
Just back to a little bit of the financial part.
Yeah.
There was a lot of committee meetings.
There was a lot of committee meetings.
Are those compensated at the same rate as the, as State Board meetings?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I think one of the big questions that I always have, and that I think everybody is, so we've got this, we've got EQS, we've got the standards. How do we assure that, that schools are meeting those standards, are using those standards appropriately?
Yeah.
And that may not be a State Board responsibility, probably isn't.
Under, under the current governance configuration, right? That had, that came about after 2012, right? The Agency of Education is responsible for overseeing implementation of the rules. We do not oversee the agency, and so our role right now is to create the rules, approve the standards. And then the agency's responsibility is to both support implementation, right, in the ways that it can, but also is responsible for accountability and monitoring with respect to implementation. Where there is gray areas is who then is supervising the agency with respect to ensuring that they are sort of doing their job with respect to implementation. And that is sort of, that's a question mark, right? And I know that question has come up.
I might harken back to the testimony we had right before you came, and just ask, given sort of all of the legal maneuverings and all of that, where do we stand on independent school approval process for those schools who have submitted their renewal application but have put the asterisk next to the anti-discrimination portion? Are they continuing to receive public dollars? Why, just where does that stand?
So I think, I'm trying to remember, because this goes back to the February 2023 State Board meeting, so a couple of years ago. There were, I believe, three schools that submitted forms with an asterisk, two of them dropped out and elected to be recognized and to not seek public tuition dollars. The third school is subject to a lawsuit, so I probably, you know, won't say any more than that. But what I will say is, with the assurance form that the agency has developed that was sent out, again, I believe it was last week, sent out to all independent schools, and there's a checkbox, you know, are you approved but not eligible to receive tuition, are you approved and eligible to receive tuition, are you a therapeutic school? And depending on your answer, there is a series of assurances the school is asked to check off. The agency will then be receiving that information, and then, based on the agency's, you know, preparation of a report, it will then come before our 2200 approvals committee for their consideration, and then ultimately before the full board. So where we are right now, we have not done any reapprovals of independent schools for more than a year. We've sort of been in a holding pattern as schools and the agency are sort of getting up to speed on these updates to our rules. What I've heard from the agency is beginning in the spring, we were going to start, those floodgates will open, and the State Board is going to be receiving a lot of requests for reapproval. But the process is the agency, you know, sort of collects that information and then gives it to the board. So at this point, I don't have an answer for you, but I do think that information will be coming within the next few months.
And is that reapproval on the five-year cycle that's coming, or is that all, everybody?
Well, it depends on the school. So if you're a kindergarten, I believe the approval period can only be two years. I know that in years past, we've had schools up for reapproval that we have only approved for a year, and then we've asked them to come back before the board, because, you know, there was something in the application that the board just wanted to make sure that, you know, that the issue that we saw was going to be rectified within a year. And so then, so we had an approval for a one-year period or a two-year period, but the general rule is a five-year period.
And just to clarify, I think your question, Representative Collins, is there was no reset here, where everybody had to start, restart reapproval. We will be taking in reapproval. We will be taking in reapprovals as they come up in whatever time, time-bound cycle, which varies, right? As they come up in that cycle. So with the change in rule, there was no reset that said, okay, everyone now has to go back through the reapproval process under the rules. What's going to happen is, is that as they come up against their clock, right, and they come to see reapproval, then they will be evaluated against the new rules formally.
You talk about going into the CTE rules. They have not been updated in a decade or so. If we get a proposal and then we start talking about it very seriously and hear about sort of a change in governance and funding for CTEs as opposed to content, how might that affect your needs in updating CTE rules?
I think that's a good question. So the process that we have right now that we're gonna be engaging is, is that the Agency of Education is going to take a first pass at making technical recommendations to us with regard to substance. We're expecting those technical recommendations sometime this spring. So I, given sort of how this process works and that we, I, again, will want to be engaging the public and representatives from CTE constituencies, I think we would be in a position to start the technical review on that. If in fact, then, there were additional governance changes, we certainly would need to consider those and their implications for the rules.
That's helpful to know, just from our own sort of planning purposes, that it sort of originates at the AOE, goes to you.
And this is, but that's, that's an agreed-upon process for CTE.
And this is the first time that that's happened.
Yeah.
So we had this conversation with the agency, probably in the spring, and thought that that would really make sense, that the agency really can put a first pass on it before we take the rule and then have the formal rulemaking process.
And as you might remember, that's a shift from what the agency requested last session before you, which was for the agency to take ownership of the rule. And I think our position on that was that it is really important that the EQS, independent school rules and CTE rules all be with the same body, right? Those three rules need to stay hand in glove. It should never be the case that a child crosses the hallway in a school from a public school setting to a CTE setting, for example, and have different sets of rules or have these rules not work together. And so our recommendation was that those three rules need to stay together. And you can already see, for example, how the state board has been very careful to make sure that our EQS and the 2200 rules mirror one another to the extent possible allowed by statute. It will be our intent to do that under CTE. And so after that discussion and where things landed with the General Assembly, we had a conversation with the agency. We very much value the agency's input and want their technical expertise on this, given where the rules are housed right now. So the agreement that we reached with them is that they would take the first pass to provide that technical information. And then we would engage in our rulemaking process that looked very similar to what we did on EQS, which would be a thoroughly publicly engaged process prior to filing ICAR, right? And then taking it through the ICAR, LCAR process after that.
I think that was also one of the compelling reasons that we did not go along with the agency's request, because the state board process is so much more public.
Yeah, well, similar question to yours, but a different part of, in the new, I'm getting on my nerves, or 2200, and the new rules for approved independent schools to receive public tuition, you asked about where we are for the implementation of the nondiscrimination clause. There are also changes to special education, I think, which require for providing special education. And so I'm, so those would go into effect July 1, 2025, or those already are in effect.
They're already in effect.
So one, a date question, and two, like an implementation, do we know if that is being implemented?
So that requirement already went into effect. And if you think about, you know, in my mind, I'm sort of analogizing like a tax form and like what's above the line and what's below the line.
Yeah.
So to be approved, and so approved means you, you meet all of the standards set forth in Rule Series 2200. To be approved, you need to comply with the nondiscrimination requirements. To be approved to, and eligible to receive public tuition, that's kind of below the line, if you will. So to be approved, you've got to meet the nondiscrimination requirements regardless of whether or not you receive public tuition. To also be eligible to receive public tuition, you need to comply with the special ed laws. That went into effect July 1st of 2024. And the assurance form that the agency has now sent out to all independent schools will be capturing that information.
And Representative Reddy, the state board reviewed that assurance form several times, once in the spring and once again in the fall. We provided very specific feedback on that form to ensure that that form was consistent with the rule and also federal law. So my understanding is that the form has been updated to reflect state board input. But that was an instance where the state board had some very specific feedback on how the, the agency was going about implementing the rule.
Probably there's a little bit of follow-up question and probably a good thing for us to be asking the agency. So the sort of accountability or checkback of, are we meeting EQS or are we meeting the rule 2200? So for approved independent schools is a pretty lengthy attestation form. For public schools and EQS, what is that? Again, this may be the question you're asking, and maybe it's a question for the AOE or even in the field. Are they attest, similar attestation forms? Is it a review process? Is it a, how is that?
Yeah. So we, under the new district quality standards, there are, there are ways, right, that the agency, there's a framework for the district that need, that they need to provide evidence that they are doing certain kinds of things around operations, you know, financial facilities, right? There is a reference in the DQS that goes back to, in the DQS, it goes back to the EQS with respect to very specific things in there that are points of monitoring and accountability for districts with respect to aspects of the EQS. In the DQS, those things that are listed are just listed as sections of the EQS. And, and the agency is responsible for developing a specific guidance that districts must follow to meet or be accountable for these things. That guidance is yet to be promulgated. Once that guidance is promulgated, then the agency will be responsible as a part of the district quality process to be making sure that those specific aspects of the EQS. But it is a very specific list, it is not the full EQS. In the EQS, districts also have responsibilities with respect to reporting, right, information. And one of the things, one of the ways in which I think we strengthened the EQS is with respect to the types of data and information that they are now required to put in their annual plans that are available to the public, including disaggregated data around, that help us understand patterns of equity or inequity in a district with respect to district characteristics.
And those are some new requirements in the district?
There are some new requirements with respect to reporting. And some of, and those reporting requirements are not exclusive to students who attend, that physically attend the district. There are, they include students for whom the district is responsible, and that includes students who attend independent schools or are placed out of the district. So to your question, right, there are some frameworks set up here, right? But again, the accountability and monitoring work is on the agency's shoulders?
All right, thank you. We'll break for lunch now. We're on a tight deadline in terms of the Budget Adjustment Act. Some of what you initially have provided, we may be unsuccessful even working with, I would just highly recommend that you follow up with our colleague.
Yeah.
We can prepare something working for you if we discuss.
That'd be great, yeah. Good detail proposal.
Thank you. Thank you.